In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Dear Lord, one day somebody brought us to church for the first time, and we appreciate whoever that person was. We thank you for the people who are around us that bring us closer to you, and also for those people around us that challenge us to be close to you. We look forward to just simply trying to follow your path that you blaze for us every day, Jesus, especially just by watching and being close to the Eucharist, by listening to Mary as she protects us as a mother from heaven, and looking for those who are most in need so that we can always be servants to those who are around us. We ask you today to send down your Holy Spirit as you did at Pentecost so that our church, our parish, our communities can respond to those great desires of the Spirit and allow us to be docile to his indications as we move through this hour, as we pray. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Saint Joseph, pray for us. Well, it's great to welcome you all here today. I just wanted to set the stage of kind of who's here in terms of some of the people who have been such key team members for me and for this whole process that was kicked off about three years ago in October. Father John Gisler, where's Father John? There he is. Father John Gisler, he is our vicar. In other words, he represents the bishop in our area for us. And so, welcome Father Gisler. He's been a key team member and working through these last few years. And so, welcome him here. It's wonderful to have him here. Also, we have staff and pastoral council members. Just raise their hands so that you know these are some other people here, and I'll just run through the list really quickly. Karen Walker, Cindy, where's Cindy? There's Cindy, and Marilyn Schroeder. She's okay. Claire, and Betsy, there's Betsy over there. Great. Here is there with her. Yeah, here is part of our wonderful musical team here. John McLaughlin, there's Johnny. John Porzio, there's John, and Teresa Lander, there's Teresa. Nate Boyle, let's see, Don Loever, thanks for being here, Deacon Jim Olson, Tom Rooney, and Jeff Hoover. Okay. All right, so at any rate, these are all the characters that have been helping me, and I appreciate all the hard work they've done. And I introduce them all to you so that if, you know, if we're going through either this presentation or in the future you see them, they're great people to be able to talk to and be able to ask questions with and be able to walk with as we go through this merger process. So, I think that we'll start with a story that is near to my heart, and that is that the great grouping, which is a holder name grouping, it's instead of just calling ourselves 332, the first gospel that we got exposed to as a grouping was the Gospel of Jesus saying, "If you want to be great, you have to be the servant of all and be last." And so, thus, the inspiration for me was just simply in the Gospel. That name is just simply a holder name to really leave way to a name that hopefully we'll discuss as we talk a little bit more into the merger. But for me, one of the great experiences I've had in these last three years was in Kentucky this past summer where we did a mission trip. And on the mission trip, we were out in the middle of nowhere. Literally, there were more mice and snakes than there were of anything else around us. And so, you know, part of the mission was just simply surviving that ruggedness of the Appalachia area, which has its beauty, but also it's, well, not so many earthly benefits. As we were caravanning out one time, we had about eight cars headed on this really small, narrow dirt road with tons of, you know, places where you needed to stay focused driving. All of a sudden, a huge tree fell in front of the caravan, and we couldn't get behind it. We couldn't get beyond it. This tree was so big that you needed to get a chainsaw, so we had somebody come out and help us chainsaw it out. But as we were waiting there, the kids, you could imagine, they lined up on the tree and were playing all games on there, even doing like a massage thing like this. Everybody doing that was fun, and I got to hear confessions. However, when we looked at the tree, I started to count. I wanted to see like how old it was. But that's actually not how to know the age of a tree. At least this particular tree, it didn't matter how many rungs it was. It was, there was an algorithm that our dear Karen, who's got a great mathematical mind, figured out with an algorithm and realized that this tree was over 250 years old. And so, one of the kids on the trip said, "Wow, can you imagine this tree was just beginning at the moment that this country of ours was fighting for our independence?" If you add up the four parishes that you see, Good Samaritan, Our Lady of Peace, St. John the Baptist, and St. John and Paul, the life of how long their parishes have been around, it's over 250 years old. And what a merger is, to simply put it, is the suppression of the four canonical persons of these four parishes to form one new one. And so, in some sense, what I'm going to propose today, what we're being asked to see, is to merge four parishes into one, to suppress the canonical persons of the four parishes so as to become one. And the same reason, like, why would it be important that we look at like a tree falling down in front of a mission trip? Well, because what was the purpose of us even being there? It was that all four of our parishes had people that we wanted to go and serve a community in need, which was a school, and help paint and revive and just be there with them and even raise money for them. And so, there was a greater purpose to it, and so I hope today that we can see that what is the purpose of our church? Like, why do we exist? We exist to get to heaven. We exist for us as four parishes to be able to inspire each other to follow the pathway that Jesus has sacrificially given us in order to get to heaven. And so, that's our vision. It's a vision of trying to inspire each other, to work together as four parishes, to lead people to heaven, especially through the love of Jesus, because there's no other way to get there than that. But our grouping was initiated about three years ago. It was around fall. And you could see the four parishes that came together, three along the Ohio River, and then St. John and Paul. So, St. John the Baptist, Our Lady of Peace, Good Samaritan, and St. John and Paul. And obviously, one of the great things that I'm truly grateful for is the amount of time people have taken to do Eucharistic adoration. Being rooted in the Eucharist, being, following Jesus Christ, is probably the greatest gift that we could have in our Catholic Church. And so, there's no doubt for me and for our parishes that just coming around the Eucharist and Jesus is the key to getting to heaven. And also, being able to hear his divine word, the way Mary did, that listening, that attentiveness with our hearts. And finally, obviously, all that should lead us to be able to cherish those who are most vulnerable, those who are most in need, whether they be Catholic or not, whether they speak English or not, or whether they be outside the womb or not. And so, currently, what we have is a model based on four parish entities. And if you can look up here with me, each of the icons that you see here are icons from our four parishes, which are currently four separate parishes. Want to drill down, four separate EIN, you know, tax deductible numbers, four separate canonical entities. And so, in the upper left there, you'll see an image, this is an iconic image of Good Samaritan. It's in the ceiling of their church of Jesus. And so, and then to the right, you'll see St. John the Baptist baptizing Jesus. That's the church of St., that's the parish of St. John the Baptist. The bottom left is the beautiful image, which you can see in the back of church at Our Lady of Peace. It's one of the great ways to celebrate Mass is to look at Mary, and so that's Our Lady of Peace. And then here at St. John and Paul, in the facade, if you come into this church, this is the mosaic which is outside here, which I think I spoke about a little bit at Mass today, inspired by that moment where St. John Paul II was almost assassinated. He leans back in the arm of his assistant, looks up at the wall, the Vatican is just plain. And he's like, "Wouldn't it be great to look at Mary?" And so, as a pope, he got his wish. And so, this mosaic is put on the wall there, and we were blessed to be able to have a copy of that at the front of our parish here. So, here's some of the statistics. These are some of the things that are making up our current parishes, just very raw numbers of parishioners. You can see at Good Samaritan about 3,200, Our Lady of Peace about 2,500, St. John the Baptist around 600, and at St. John and Paul, just over 9,000 parishioners. And you also notice some of the numbers of baptism and deaths. And you can see at Good Samaritan, 17 baptism, Our Lady of Peace, five, St. John the Baptist, zero, and St. John and Paul, 73. And then the deaths roll out 84, 20, 14, and 17. And so, these are some of the, just the basic numbers of the makeup currently of our four parishes. And then you can also see mass attendance. If you add up the four parishes, it's about 15,000 people. And you can see in January of this past year, we had about 1,300 people coming to Mass, which is about 9%. And now, most recently in September, we're up to about 2,300, which is about 15%. Now, obviously, I don't know if you ever had this happen to you, but if you came home from your school and you had a big 15% in red ink circled, that wouldn't be good. I probably would not be watching many Penguin or Steeler games that night if that was the case. And so, part of what I hope that you're feeling here, and that I hope that we get out of here, is that the church, we need to be able to adjust to what's going on faithfully to Jesus Christ to try to draw and inspire more people to Christ, especially by coming to Mass, especially through the great gift of the Eucharist. And so, it's so important that, just like we read in the Gospel today, that we be those beggars, begging Jesus Christ to let us see, to really let us recognize that we can't be comfortable where we are right now if this is the data that we're getting in terms of Mass attendance, just as one look at many aspects of our church life now. That's also why currently we're engaged in processes like the search at St. John and Paul and in the Beaver Valley Alpha to try to increase, to try to help people be able to get to know Jesus Christ and follow the Lord so that during this crazy time with all the different things, it could be pre-scaned or it could be COVID, it could just be the way in which our culture is to not ever stop trying to evangelize and complete the mission of our church, which is get people to heaven. And so, part of this work that we're doing currently has to do with pulling together all of our resources and our ministries and developing ministries. Many of you who are here are already doing ministries, are involved in so many aspects of our church. And so, being able to just recognize and to dwell on that is a great blessing. Also, we have many outgoing outreaches going as well. Just yesterday morning, it was so cool. We had like, I don't know, about 25 people come to 7:30 Mass. We were in the pavilion there around the fire as they're getting their assignments, go out and help with some of the building projects of houses that were in need, whether it be in Lawrenceville or around this area. It was fantastic to just see that. And so, so many of you, it's so, I'm so grateful to see the different ways that we're serving others in our grouping. And so, obviously, a part of our service has been communications. And so, the other aspect of what we've been doing over these last three years is in the communications department, especially the Evangelion. I just wanted to draw your attention to that because I know traditionally, the bulletin was very informative and it had obviously things that are going on in the parish, and we still have that. But for me, when I started to look at what the purpose of a bulletin could be, I always feel like so many of you have stories that are going on in your ministries, that are going on in your lives. Maybe it's a baptism, maybe it's a wedding. And how do we like tap into that, to see how is God working in our lives and be able to share that? So, I had a really good friend, his name was Jay Passivant. His great-grandfather started the Passivant Hospital system that we hear about here in this area. He was the first non-Catholic Christian to start a school like that, to start a hospital system like that. And so, anyway, he started Northway Church, and he told me that part of the success of the Northway project was just giving people the opportunity to speak about their experience of Jesus, the testimonies. And so, the Evangelion is poised to try to capture those stories and publish those so that we can recognize how Jesus works in the hearts of so many of us in our community. And so, that's one of the things that we've been doing, and I encourage all of you to be able to capture, "What's the Lord doing in my life or in some of the projects that I'm involved in?" And then, share that. Also, our website has been instrumental for being able to evangelize and bring people closer to the Lord, especially during the crazy COVID time when churches were shut down. We're at least able to talk about Jesus and bring Jesus through the internet to our community. He is here. Obviously, that's one of the mottos that have helped me through these three years of just knowing that it's the Lord that's here with us. It's his sacrificial love that brings us to heaven. And one thing that I'm very proud of is this adoration aspect up there where we have two Eucharistic chapels. We have over 500 people doing one hour of adoration each week. And I just can't think of any better way for us to be able to get to heaven than looking through the window of heaven, which is the Eucharist. So, I'm so grateful for so many of you have decided to take an hour or just come by in your busyness of your day to find some silent time to look into heaven through the eyes of Jesus and the Eucharist. I love the holy half hour. If you ever hear on a Thursday morning, it's great to see the little ones learning to adore Jesus. This past few years, I've been doing a Spanish liturgy, so I've had the grace of doing Mass in Spanish, which is at 4 o'clock on Sundays. At Good Samaritan, we have a tremendously growing, fast-growing community in the Ambridge area of Latino families. We have probably about 100 or so that we're working with currently, with lots of baptisms and weddings and young kids. We have 10 kids going to St. Monica's grade school, and now one of our kids is actually going to Olsh. So, it's great to see our Latino community coming together with us to be able to worship and to be a part of our community. Also, you can see the great sacramental life, especially through baptisms and weddings that have been going on during this time as well. Faith formation, obviously, is one of the great pillars of what we're doing, and so grateful for our staff and all those who make faith formation possible. There's so many great volunteers. Catechism of the Good Shepherd is just one of them to name, which is just a great little program of getting the kids interactively involved in the Scriptures and in Jesus's life and things of that nature. It's been beautiful to be able to do that. And also, just draw your attention to something new that's just starting. It's called Young Life. I was involved in Young Life as a high school student, and it's a non-denominational youth project that really just tries to, I'd say, ask the question to the kids of like, "Who's Jesus in your life? How can you draw closer to the Lord?" Through different experiences of sports and camps and things of that nature and after-school programs. And so, we're launching Young Life in Ambridge at our church site in Ambridge there. We just hired somebody who, when the kids come back from Ambridge High School walking home, they can stop by, hang out, and then do different Bible studies and activities there. So, I'm looking forward to being able to continue to grow, especially with the youth programs that we have, some of the great gifts of our faith. Also, as we said before, there's just tremendous activities going on with our ministries. Just the other day, all four of us priests went to one of the retreats offered by Wings, and it was just such a blessing for the four of us to there and see these women who had spent a whole weekend in prayer. They had prepared this retreat, and it was a beautiful time for us to spiritually be able to work with and to be able to help that particular retreat. And I could spend all day on some of our ministries, but that's beautiful. And then, one of the other things about outreach that I thought was important to note was that during COVID, when the schools were shut down, so were a lot of the food distribution sites and areas that are struck by poverty and have a difficult time to feed our people. And so, when the food banks got shut down, we stayed open, and we worked with our schools to get the food to come to our parish, which was at Good Samaritan, to be able to have the high school kids and those kids who need the food from school in order to eat. And so, that started a whole ministry for almost like a year and a half of offering hot meals in the Beaver Valley. One of the hot meals we even got to offer was incredible because we raised over $250,000 worth of food and money to be able to feed those who are suffering from food insecurity. And I remember one of the things that we brought together, so all four of the parishes were just doing such great work to try to do that. But one of them was to have Chilean sea bass of all the things. It wasn't like here's just like a little hot dog or something like that. It was incredible to see the force of everybody coming together. Even Father Jack's homemade spaghetti and stuff was there. It's just really was a highlight, if you could say, of COVID and of trying to feed and to come together for those who were in, those who were in need. And now, I say all this because many times when we talk about merger and parishes, we can think only about finances or that finances are 80% of the picture. Well, it's not 80% of the picture. It's definitely part of the picture, but it's not the only aspect of the picture. So, I hope that more than anything that we can set the stage for as we discuss our merger is that the goal is to get to heaven, and the way of doing that is Jesus. And so, our ministries and the way in which we come closer to the Lord is the key to this. However, obviously, there's a huge picture of financial sustainability, which is part of the discussion. And so, I hope I draw your attention to the first phrase up there, which says, "All four parishes are coming together without any debt." All four of our parishes are today without debt. So, there's no debt being carried in any of our parishes. One of the reasons for this was Bishop Zubik launched a capital campaign a couple of years ago, and the money from the capital campaign was also helped to use for parishes that had debt that had been inherited from school closings and from insurance liability, all these different things. And so, the dioceses offered those parishes that had debt to relieve them of debt. And so, in our grouping, we're blessed to have four parishes that come together without any debt. Now, under a merger plan, the second line that you'll see up there is that all the assets and liabilities will become one in the new parish. And so, we will have one operational account, which assumes the responsibility of all the assets and the liabilities of all four parishes coming under one EIN number, one account, and one finance council and one system of governance. I don't know if you can see this or not. I apologize. So, this is a financial summary, just trying to give a thumbnail sketch of the operations of our four parishes. In other words, what do we normally bring in in offatory and what's our annual expense? And I'm just going to read through quickly these numbers. But the offatory from last year, fiscal year, from 2020 till 2021, at Good Samaritan, the offatory, the annual offatory was right around $350,000. Our Lady of Peace was around $250,000. St. John the Baptist, around $86,000. And St. John and Paul was about $1.3 million. And so, in total, if you added up all four of the parishes, the offatory was right around $2 million. There's obviously other sources of income, especially at St. John and Paul. We have a parish assessment, as all the parishes do. And once we were able to pay our assessment through the program called Parish Share, we were able to then share that money first with the dioceses in paying the assessment, and then share any of the overage with our parish to be able to continue some of the great things we have in our parish. Then if you look down below, it says operating expenses. And so, at Good Samaritan, the operating expenses were roughly $400,000. Our Lady of Peace was around $298,000, and St. John the Baptist was around $88,000. And then, the operating expenses here at St. John and Paul was about $1.4 million. And so, in the end, you see the operating income was $2.2 million, and the operating expenses was about $2.2, a little bit more on the expenses. But for the most part, we were able to operate with a pretty even balance sheet at the end of the day. And so, as we turn to this next slide, we'll see the different assets and some of the things that we have in our bank accounts, our savings, the Church Alive, and some of the different areas in which we're able to be able to save and steward our money. So, Good Samaritan brings with it as well $260,000. And then, there's Our Lady of Peace with about $100,000, St. John the Baptist, $310,000, and St. John and Paul, a little bit over $1 million. In the end, there's about $2.2 million in our accounts that we're able to be able to put forth for the mission in the future under this, under what we're going through now. There is a little bit of a summary of our liabilities. One of the biggest challenges that we have, especially in the Beaver Valley for the three parishes, is not in terms of its operational income and expenses, but it's paying what in Latin we call cathedraticum. So, that's the canonical term for the duty that's owed by parishes to the bishop or to the diocese. Literally, it means the money that goes towards the cathedral. The cathedral being kind of the iconic symbol of the bishop and his mission and the diocese. And so, every parish offers 17.6% of its income. It's called parish share or cathedraticum every year. And in the Beaver Valley, it's been very challenging for the parishes to be able to pay that assessment. And so, that's one of the big challenges that we have economically. We're able to pay the operational expenses, but when it comes to paying the assessment, it's been a big challenge. The other expense that all the parishes incur is that every year, 10% of our annual income goes towards the education fund to help with Catholic education in our dioceses. So, in the end, each year, it's about 27.6% or so of our income will be assessed for the needs of the dioceses like the cathedraticum, which is called parish share, or the educational fund. And so, that has definitely been a huge challenge for us in the Beaver Valley and is something that is, in the merger, we'll be able to plan to be able to assess better than where we are now. This is just simply a quick proximity of our churches, the time and distance. Good Samaritan from here is about 10 miles or 19 minutes. Our Lady of Peace, where I live, about 11 miles or 20 minutes. And St. John the Baptist is about 10 miles from here or around 19 minutes in traveling time. Now, obviously, it kind of depends on traffic, depends on weather, and on whether or not there is construction going, but that's in the end, some of the distances there. Part of this merger especially touches the hearts and the souls of those who are parishioners along the Ohio River in the Beaver County area. And that is a question of like, what's the most sustainable way to move forward? And so, I gathered together our councils and our leadership team, our staff and our clergy to go through each of the three churches a couple of years ago to assess what were some of the pros and cons of each of our three churches, parishes in the Beaver County. And it was pretty obvious as we did all of this that the place where there could be growth in terms of having people in our pews and having a future of growing, that Good Samaritan became poised to be able to do that. First, Good Samaritan has around 51% of those going to Mass on the weekends within the three parishes. And also, it is a place, like I said, where the Latino population is growing and can walk to church. And it's been great to just be able to welcome those numbers, especially into our church. It's also a place where the high school is, and so, we're looking forward with Young Life to be able to welcome a youth into our parishes and to grow our community. And as well, we're doing Alpha now, which has been a great way to find eventually a neutral site where people from around the community come together, talk about Jesus, and hopefully develop a relationship with the Lord that would entail them coming back to church. Another aspect of sustainability besides growth, as you can see, is capacity. Right now, of the three churches in the Beaver Valley, Good Samaritan offers the biggest site for worship and for Sunday Mass, just without doing anything. It's already the biggest site there and has a capacity to be able to welcome our people from our great grouping to go to Mass there. Also, there's the whole question of accessibility, especially for those who have physical ailments and need help getting into church. It's on-grade. It has the restroom capacity that is handicap accessible, and the parking lot as well provides access to the church. And then, finally, the financial considerations is that if we keep all four of our churches open, especially if we continue down this way, it's been a huge drain on maintenance and on a lot of the costs that we have to try to maintain the four churches being opened. And so, financially, the step that would be the least expensive but yet still make the most sense in terms of growth, capacity, and accessibility would be Good Samaritan because we can basically move in there without any major renovation costs. And so, part of the proposal today that I'd like to offer is that on July 1st, 2022, that we would become one parish, that we would merge the four parishes, in other words, suppress the four canonical entities of our four parishes and become one parish entity with one new name. So, that would imply that Great Grouping as a name holder would go, and so, a new name would be placed there. I don't know, like St. Joseph or whatever. But so, it'd be a new name for that. And so, what the merger implies would be one clergy team, one pastoral council, one finance council, one staff. And if you look at me again, look at these icons again, it would be that we would, I would like to propose that we have two places for weekend masses and where we would do most of our sacramental work, the daily Mass and confessions. On the left, you'll see that's Good Samaritan, and on the right, you'll see that's St. John and Paul. So, my proposal for our merger, July 1st, is to have two places for regular worship, which would be Good Samaritan in Ambridge and here at St. John and Paul. And our other two parishes, Our Lady of Peace and St. John the Baptist, would be places for occasional worship, like for example, funerals or baptisms. But for the most part, our presence in the two communities of Good Samaritan and St. John and Paul would continue to try to do what we've been doing, which is to serve the pastoral needs of our people from these two sites. And, great, okay, so, action plan. I would first and foremost just beg you all to please be praying to Jesus. He's the one that's, it's his church. He's the Savior. I'm definitely not. We definitely are not. And so, we can all agree that going to Jesus is the key. Eucharistic adoration for me is the greatest way, one of the great ways of doing that. So, I just would, yeah, I'd love to ask all of you to just take some time in front of the Blessed Sacrament to pray for this merger, to pray for this plan to really be able to be fruitful. In a little bit, we'll talk about how you can submit a new parish. In a little bit, we'll talk about how you can submit a new parish name and suggestion for a new parish name. You'll see up there a web, an email that you could send in or call our offices at questions@greatgrouping.org. And I think sometimes when we have all these information going back and forth, it's easy for rumors to start. On our, in our bulletin, the Evangelion, we're going to have obviously a Q&amp;A section there, which is going to answer and respond to questions, but on our website is the same way. And so, if you don't see it published either on our website or in the bulletin, you can guarantee that it's probably a rumor. And so, if you don't know the answer to the question or you hear these rumors going around, ask us. And we've been already getting good questions that have come in, and we'll respond to those and then publish those so that we have one concrete source of information as we move along in this, in the merger process. Personally, I'd love to discuss this with anybody. So, if you have any friends or family that aren't here today and want to just drop by Pomodoro's on November 17th from 5:00 to 8:00, I'll be hanging out there. Or if you like pizza, Frank's Pizza's awesome, so come join me down in Ambridge, November 19th from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Also, throw out a challenge to try to attend Mass over these next few months in a place that you don't normally go to Mass. And finally, we're going to do a picnic in June at the Economy Park and just try to celebrate the end of the Great Grouping, so to speak, and the beginning of our new parish. So, I hope everybody will come out to that, I'm looking forward to that. Maybe we'll get fireworks and a really fun barbecue, but the idea is to be able to kind of head into the summer, being able to come together in a way that would, yeah, be celebratory. One question that sometimes I get, and I'm just going to end with this, which I love this question, it's like, well, Father, are all four of our priests going to continue? Like, what's the deal on that, right? Well, Father Howard Campbell is the vicar for clergy, and at the priestly convocation we had just a couple of days ago, I asked him that question. I said, Father, I've gotten this question several times, what happens to our four priests on July 1st? And he said, obviously, it's a bishop's decision, so it's above our pay grade, but he said right now, there are no plans to make any changes of priests, but it could happen. So, for right now, we assume that our four priests are going to journey all together till July 1st, and we assume that that's kind of where we'll go, and then at that point, the bishop can obviously not make any decisions on that. But for now, there are no plans of that. So, it's a great, it's a great thing for me to have a band of brothers like the four priests, and we're obviously open to what the bishops' needs or the needs of the dioceses would be, but for now, that's kind of where we are with this. So, I know there's a lot of information here, and what I would like to propose is that we take some time to... Okay, yeah, sure. This PowerPoint will be published on the website for anybody who wants to see it. Also, we taped yesterday's session, I don't know if we're taping now as well, and we taped the session that did at Good Samaritan. So, this presentation and the presentation I gave in the valley, which is basically the same, are on our YouTube channels and on our website. So, if you know somebody who's interested, they can also watch the presentation on those sites, so. Was there anything else that you all would offer to that? Father Gisler, would you qualify anything on that I said there? Okay, good.